All right. Call to order, our special city council workshop for February 6th. Second item on the agenda, discussion of the fire and EMS department to include funding sources, manpower, service territory. Chief?
Thank you, guys.
It's all yours.
Well, our main topic of discussion is going to kind of focus on our districts that we cover on the ambulance side of the house. I've got Aaron brought a little PowerPoint up to kind of give you a brief overview real quick before we kind of get into the mapping here. But this kind of shows you what we do on each side of the house, both fire and EMS. Our fire district, of course, covers the city limits and a rural fire district of about 141 square miles. Our EMS district is roughly the eastern two-thirds of all of Logan County and it's about 473 square miles. The city does receive via a contract with EMS Board I-1, a property tax assessment of three mills that's collected. We're all properties within the Guthrie School District boundaries. These two maps are, both are EMS on the left and our fire district's on the right. I did not print out a fire district map, but the EMS map is the first page on the pack that I handed you, just so you can see it up a little closer. But as you can see, there's only a handful of services that provide EMS for our county and of course, there's 13, excuse me, 14 fire districts that cover all of the county. Next slide, there we go. A little bit on our EMS funding, as I said, we have a contractual agreement with EMS District I-1, which represents the Guthrie School District area. There's a board appointed by the county commissioners that oversees this money and has voted to contract with our department and the city to provide service for that area. And if you look at the second map I gave you in your little packet, kind of a little bit easier to read and I apologize for the crudeness, but the school district mapping and ACOG's mapping don't really work well together, so I had to hand draw it on there. But you can see the hashed in area that shows Guthrie on it. That's our school district boundaries and that's where we receive the property tax revenue from. The remaining areas shaded in yellow are what we respond to as part of our 911 service area. And I've outlined those respective school districts in black and wrote them in there. There's Luther, Perkins-Strine, Coyle, and Mahal Orlando, and then areas of Edmond and Deer Creek down to the south.
There's Randle Bay.
Our property tax revenue that we get on that contract, it's in Article 10 of the Oklahoma Constitution, it's called a 522 EMS district, and it allows to collect up to three mills of property tax to basically fund the operation and capital improvements and the basis of EMS and then you bill for services used as needed. They're very restrictive on how those can be formed and Article 10 only lays out three methods where you can form them. It's either by county boundary, by school district boundary, or by city limit boundary. In Logan County, we've got, as the map showed, there's three school district EMS districts, and that's ours and Guthrie, the Cashion and the Crescent. Ours is all entirely in Logan County where the Crescent and Cashion districts span county lines into Kingfisher and Cashion's actually goes into Canadian County for like one neighborhood. And they get property taxes for all those areas as well. The original discussion, and it's been off and on for several years, was to dissolve these and form a countywide district for all of Logan County and then you would have one board that oversees all that property tax revenue and then they would divvy it up to whoever based on how they want to redraw the response districts. They could very easily have one contractor come in to cover the whole county or they could choose to hire us and other agencies to cover the whole county, but it would then be their responsibility to figure out who was going to cover what. The downside of that, the Cashion folks aren't really in favor of it because to do that, they would lose their Kingfisher County and Canadian County portions of their district. And that's where the bulk of their revenue comes from, is the gas plants and stuff there west of Cashion. So it's not favorable for them. Crescent really didn't care. Their little bit they have in Kingfisher County doesn't bring in a lot of revenue because it's primarily farmland and not a lot of taxes paid on it. So that's kind of where that discussion had ended. You go to the next slide. This kind of lays out how we're currently manned. We have three 24-hour shift rotations and there's eight personnel on each shift. We have a six-man minimum per shift that allows for folks to be off on various types of leave, whether it's sick or medical leave and vacation. And then I'm the sole administrative employee working Monday through Friday. I also serve as our fire marshal and our EMS director and the battalion chiefs and some of the other shift officers share and a lot of administrative duties as well, just because we don't have anybody else to do it.
You don't have an admin?
We don't have anybody. This kind of lays out how each shift is manned. There's 25 total full-time employees and eight-man shifts with a six-man minimum. There's battalion chief, two captains, a lieutenant, and there were firefighters on each shift. Prior to this fiscal year, for a few years, we had five firefighters, so we had nine-man shifts. And due to our mid-year budget adjustment last year, we reduced that back down to eight-man shifts. 2017 call statistics, we had 2,604 EMS incidents and that includes car wrecks and 398 fire-related incidents. Our city limit population's roughly 12,000 on latest numbers. I wanted to point this out, just so you guys see the workload and the type of calls we go to, but on the next slide, I want to compare that to departments around us in this region that also run the ambulance side of the fire department. Cushing is probably the closest to us. Their population's about 4,000 or less than us and they do it with seven-man shifts and you can see their call volumes in proportion to ours. But they also have a chief, a deputy chief, and a secretary administrative assistant that are around during the day as well. Chickasha, not a whole lot bigger than us, but proportionally their call volume's about the same as us. Down there at the bottom, you can see their administrative employees and they have 12-man Ponca's a little bit different. I didn't get their call volume in time to, actually, it got cut off somehow. It's on there somewhere, but I guess it got cut off in transition. But they have 22-man shifts for roughly twice the population as we have. What's unique about us is our geographic area that we cover is so large that if you were to estimate the population that our ambulance serves, it's Cushing 35,000, possibly 40,000 with the way areas in the south part of the county are growing when you figure it all in, so.
And all of these are only, that's their population?
That is city limit populations. Cushing does cover the town of Yale and some rural areas. They cover part of Ripley as well. They estimated their total population served was less than 12,000 people. Kingfisher, somewhat similar to ours, but they figured their population is maybe 7,500 to 8,000 people served. We're just in a unique situation with the way the population boom has gone south of us.
Yeah. So we're basically the largest out of all of them, as far as total.
When you start doing, Ponca's in a weird situation. They have four fire department ran ambulance services in K. County and they're all kind of divided up into quadrants, so they've got a lot of help fairly close. We're kind of on an island in a sense here. We've got a private EMS service that's contracted with Cashion and Crescent and they have one-man truck at all times, so we help them, they help us when they can. But our next closest help is IMSA to the south and with IMSA, you never know where they're coming from.
What was our total calls again?
Our total calls, Aaron, can you go back a slide?
2,600?
EMS. Yeah, these are 2,600 on EMS.
So three, four, 3,000?
Yeah.
And then if we go back to where we were ahead?
And I can tell you, just going back and looking at our call volume, we're increasing about 200 calls a year roughly, every year going up, so.
So Cushing has total 2,500, we got 3,000.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know what Ponca City has though.
Yeah, I can tell, I've got it on an email. I don't know why the slide didn't transition, but.
I guess you got Chickasha's got 3,800, right?
Yeah. Ponca's total call volume was, right, 50, 5,800 roughly total?
So we're short a couple guys, we know that.
Yeah, we've had, the city did a study sometime in the.
And we did a gas plant. We're doing pretty good.
Yeah. Yeah, the funny thing is, you know, Ponca City, they get no revenue from the gas plant whatsoever, really. They get nothing. They have their own fire department that handles their emergencies, their ambulance responds out there, but they don't, currently, they don't have any property tax revenue coming from that for any kind of emergency services.
Wow.
They're in discussions of doing one countywide in K. County right now. I've talked to them a couple times about how things work down here, but as of right now, they don't get any, you know, other than just in-kind grants and stuff that they work with the city on, they don't get any kind of dedicated revenue from it.
Oh, bizarre.
Now, there's a lot of folks in town and they spend money there and, you know, buy things, so of course, our sales tax benefits from it. Yeah, and I think the last study we had done said we needed 12-man shifts. And I know cost-wise, that's probably never going to happen in the foreseeable future without some kind of large influx of revenue, but eight-man shifts just doesn't do it without leaving ourselves hanging and buying quite a bit. I know some of you have seen some of the social media coverage and stuff. We had two house fires here at the first of the month where one had one person show up on the first and the other one had two. And the one that showed up on the first house fire, he was coming in on callback because all the shift personnel were out on an ambulance call and a car wreck, so.
Well, then would you have people on training, vacation?
Yeah, well, they meant shifts. We can't send anybody to training typically without calling somebody in on overtime. With nine men, we were able to, with that nine man with a six-man minimum, we had one person flex if somebody kind of needed to go to class or if they were sick.
So are you pulling vacation?
Well, it's difficult, yeah. We're spending overtime just to kind of make ends meet. I mean, it's about two out of three days, we've got somebody in on overtime because we've got, and it's the worst storm, I was telling Leroy this morning, we're kind of in the worst that it can be. We've got two folks out on injury. We've got a third out on baby leave with a newborn at home and as soon as he gets back, we have another one that his wife's due here in the next couple of weeks, so that's really not going to change. And then we've got two vacancies from folks that left the department, which we just finished taking applications for and will be testing for that position here in a couple of weeks. So we're kind of in the perfect mix for it being bad.
So you're a team of 11?
More or less.
Total?
I'll tell you what, I came in and worked shift Saturday, that's how thin it was.
We'll start getting Jim up there.
And that was so bad, you know, Dane over here, he had worked several days in a row last week and missed kids' sporting activities and stuff Saturday and I came in so he could go home. Just we, we're still, yeah, and that's everybody. That's just one case I can tell you in particular, but.
There's usually not a day that I'm not coming in on my day.
With they had 96 hours overtime this last period.
And it's the same, it's the same core group, yeah, folks that keep coming in because they're dedicated to the job, because there's nothing that says they have to, but they do it because they love the job and they want to support the community and take care of them. They're dedicated to their job, but it's putting extreme strain on the manpower.
But you start getting 96 hours overtime, maybe judgment gets clouded up.
Yes, we run into a safety issue with these guys. They're either tired, because it's not very often they get to sleep much at night.
I got a question. Why are we handling all these other areas outside?
Okay, historic on that, prior to 2010, Oklahoma state law dictated that the closest ambulance had to respond. That's how we ended up covering that area to begin with, because we were it. In 2010, the House Bill 1888 passed, which allowed ambulance districts to define where they're going to go, submit a map to the State Health Department, and that's all they have to do. So basically, with you guys' order, we can redraw where we're going to go, send it to the State Health Department, and that's our new district.
How much do you think that'll help you?
Well, I can tell you this, what kills me is, you know, number one, maintenance issues. These are the roughest roads in the county that we're going out on and it's a long way out there. And if something happens back in town and we're out there.
You mean everything east?
Yes, and north. I mean, those roads up there aren't much better.
Who's going to go if we don't?
We don't know. They're really, I mean, they're in, if you go east.
Do those cities need to stop and consider a?
Well, they could, but you're only talking about small areas over there.
Commissioners need to.
You know, you've got the rural area as well, so I mean, you've got the counties and those municipalities, you know, Coyle, Langston, and Rahal.
Right. I mean, I don't want to link people to alerts, but at the same time, if they're not paying their fair share, that's it. Because they cost money.
The thing of it is, Jim, if we've got ambulance or fire trucks that are going that direction, we may leave it ourselves.
Exactly. The fire I told you about.
There's that too. There's that too.
You know, I think, I think we.
None of those roads go through.
There's a, there's a, there's an ethical moral obligation somewhat.
Well, the other problem is this hash area. We have a contractual obligation with that EMS district to cover it. And if we're out covering this area that they're not paying for and we leave this uncovered, we put ourselves in a position of possibly violating.
So show me on this map of what we're not covering.
The yellow is all ours.
Okay, and the rest is not ours?
Yeah, just the yellow. No, we do cover that via mutual aid agreements.
Okay.
Those areas don't have a truck available.
When you can.
When we can, yes.
Same thing back with.
I thought we were talking at one point about the Crescent EMS. We were looking at us taking over.
We made a proposal to them and they chose to go with a private contractor, so we're out of that game now. We run over there maybe a couple times a month to help them out when they don't have a truck available. But I mean, that goes, we go and help IMSA, we've been going to Edmond about once a week or so to help them because they don't have a truck available. But it's reciprocal, because they're coming to help us too.
Sure.
Same thing with LiveNet.
Well, that kind of situation.
Sixteen miles away.
Yeah, mutual aid is mutual aid, it's always going to be there.
But if they don't have anything at all.
Well, if you watch the county commissioner meetings, which I happen to, you don't, they don't know how to fix this very well. I think that the only way you're going to fix it is with a tax.
Of some type, yeah.
Of some type on everybody.
They know that. Money's the solution, they know that. They just don't want to do it.
Well, I'm telling you. Well, no, because I watched it this morning and they said, well, that's maybe not the easiest way to go, let's get the towns involved, da-da-da. We've been there, right?
And they'll have to be involved.
Well, they're going to have to be.
If you guys look at the third page that I gave you here, I think it's the third page, it's this, it's a picture of a map. The assessor, which you probably saw this, Goodman talked about this in the commissioners' meeting, the assessor created this map and it's the school districts in color and that shows what three mills, which is the maximum allowable EMS tax, will generate. So this area that we're talking about, really, that we cover is the 58,000 up north, the 45,000 to the east, a little bit of that $396 and some of that $25.49. So we're only talking roughly $100,000 that it would even bring in, which doesn't put much of a dent in our problem. I mean, it's more than what we have now, but it doesn't fix things. It doesn't make anything near being whole. Of course, you know, the south part is quite a bit.
There has been some efforts through the legislature to allow, at the level for public safety, we need to continue to endorse that process as well each session.
At the city level outside of our city?
Oh, inside of the city level.
Well, it's.
Not, not to replace what we're doing tonight, but to supplement, because 100,000's not going to answer our problem. But if we could also have inside the city limits for fire, because this is EMS, for fire police, you could have a mill levy if they adopt the right legislation, that would also add to this.
So $100,000 isn't going to handle this, but what do you need? Do you have any idea?
Well, I mean, to add three folks, we're probably talking in the neighborhood of 170-ish with salary, equipment, all that good stuff roughly.
But chief, you talk about the overtime that's used just to kind of keep things together when you've got people on vacation or.
And that was discussed in our mid-year budget review and we cut those three people. That was my answer is, we can do it, but overtime's going to go up because the calls aren't going to go away just because we cut manpower.
And, and what we did is we took roughly about half of our savings from eliminating those three positions and moved it into overtime because we knew overtime would go up. So if we got this hundred, put that overtime back into salaries instead of overtime, you're close to funding.
We're probably pretty close to that.
I was going to ask, so how much does that over, how much is that overtime that would be, not 100% go away, but a lot of it would go away if you added three positions? Because that would add obviously to the.
It would eliminate a lot of the 24-hour shift vacancies that we have. There's still going to be incidental stuff when we.
Sure, oh yeah, absolutely. I'm not saying you do away with overtime.
It's probably going to close to come, come close to funding it, is what.
Yeah, if you take, like Leroy said, you do away with what overtime we put in from saving, cutting repositions and this extra 100,000, it gets us back close to having those three people, but even with nine men, we get spread thin.
So, so the key goes back to these third areas that are not stepping anything.
But even if they're going to pay.
Well, the property tax revenue, that shows the economics of those areas, there's just not a lot.
Are they, how much are they paying per trip now?
We can bill them all we want.
That's just not.
Well, the problem is Medicaid and Medicare, they pay what they pay. It doesn't matter if I bill them $10,000, they're going to pay what they pay. It's a contractual thing with them, that's all they pay. And your private carriers are getting to be the same way because they back you into a corner and force you to get in their network or they won't pay anything. So then you take what they're going to pay, which is not terrible, but it's nowhere near what you bill. The average rate nationally that's collected is around 50 to 60 percent and we're right about the 55 percent mark. So we're right there in where everybody else is on collections. But that's, this is why, you know, you go south into the metro and every year, IMSA's wanting a higher subsidy from these municipalities because it costs so much to provide the service.
Sure, sure.
Our drug costs go up, our truck costs go up, our manpower costs go up and we just can't keep up. And insurance, Medicare, Medicaid especially, are not keeping up. I mean, that's why these hospitals keep closing down all over the place. It's just, medical care in general is.
Reimbursement level. Now, but the, but the individual receiving that service can still, is still potentially liable for the remainder of that bill?
Medicare, Medicaid says no. Their secondary can pick up, but you're not supposed to be balance billing those folks. But here's the problem, if they have Medicare, Medicaid, they probably don't have the money to pay the bill anyway. That's why they have Medicare, Medicaid, or Medicaid for sure to begin with, is because of their income level. We work as best we can with folks that have a balance on doing payment plans, but these folks, they have to justify what their income is and for them to pay $25 a month on something is like they're doing without something to pay that, so.
What do you have in IMSA?
Charging more, some will generate more revenue.
No.
So how much is Crescent paying for this third-party IMSA?
They, if I remember right, and things have changed since then, but their original proposal from that private service was 65 percent of their tax collection, their three mills that they get, which their three mills is only bringing in 68, 69,000. So this private contractor's taking 65 percent of that and then their board has to maintain their old station, pay for their truck. They're, they're spending the 90 percent that most places. But the city of Crescent also passed a water bill fee because this company wasn't making enough money and for them to stay over there, they needed more revenue.
Surely.
So they're doing a utility surcharge for everybody in Crescent City Limits to help shore things up.
So are they also doing Cashion, is that what you said too?
Yeah, it's Miller EMS and they were in Cashion to begin with. And they're serving both cities.
So are they even breaking even at all?
I agree, if they are, it's.
I can't imagine it.
I doubt it. I doubt it. So as I view what we're talking about, it's really kind of two options, well, three, just leave it the way it is. But the other one is to redraw our boundaries, go to the state, say, these are our boundaries. It's just going to be this green area. We're not going to go outside it. And then the third one would be figure out something with, I guess, the commissioners and the cities involved and saying, okay, how do we make this a fair and level playing field? Now, my sense is that discussion of option two, how do we make this fair, you've had some of those.
We've, I've been here seven years in March and I've been working on this since I got here because I saw that it was unfair and number one, we didn't have the money, the city's continually shoring things up. And of course, we've got one different commissioner out of the three now, the other two were there and they recognized that, those two recognized even to begin with that it was a problem. And I think it became very evident when Crescent, the former Crescent EMS started having their financial issues, how big of a problem it was. They got their contractor in and things kind of smoothed out temporarily, but now we're back to having the discussion again. It is a problem and I just don't know how receptive them as a board are to.
Well, the reality is that is if we can't provide a quality service for the people in green here.
Yes.
Guthrie citizens.
Which is our primary.
If we can't provide a quality service, then we can't be talking about providing the service outside.
I agree. But I can tell you, all that does is water down everybody. You guys and everybody that works for us in this room especially, morally, we don't want to have to tell anybody.
Because it's not going to, by the way, I'm Rory Reeves, if anybody didn't know me. Our concern is the, I guess, the consequences it's going to have on how we're looked at upon by the people of Logan County. Because it's not going to come back and say, the county commissioners who are Guthrie City Council cut us off, it's going to be those firefighters and those EMTs over at Guthrie don't want to take care of us. And we're all about servicing the community, everybody. You know, we've ran, we've ran the service for 30 years to these areas, if not longer.
Yeah.
And that, that's one of our big fears is, you know, the backlash, it'll come on us.
It'll put a black eye on the department.
And you know, we're, we're a hard-headed bunch of guys, you know, we, we work non-stop until we can't see straight, but we want to, we want to help everybody. That's our main concern.
But if the quality goes down, you help nobody. Yeah, we're kind of left with no other option other than to give them a notice or some kind of notification, we need to have discussions and, you know, we've, we've kind of threatened it for a long time now and they fall for a bluff in a sense.
To add to what you're saying, servicing our community, the quality and stuff, just like this morning, we had a wreck, I-3551, four miles west. It took us 27 minutes to get there and empty the station just to operate the way we did because we got information that is south of 51, which is our area, and we had an unresponsive patient in one pit. So there's, thankfully, we, no one was hurt and I guess LifeNet wound up taking another call, but, I mean, that was 57 minutes that our city limits, it's not covered.
Wasn't covered. And the other problem that we've run into.
I mean, we're playing with fire.
We, literally.
It's a double, it's a double-edged sword because like, like we've, and y'all have probably seen on the social, social media post, a call that would be normally five minutes in our own response area, just off industrial from our station, I mean, literally a five-minute response time, IMSA took almost, almost 30 minutes to respond to. And it's nothing against IMSA, you know, they're busy too, they have a lot of situations where there's no trucks available, but regardless, I, I do it more as a manpower issue.
Oh, no, I don't.
Because, over 20 years ago, over 20 years ago, those, everybody that was here.
That's what I'm starting to wonder now as well.
Over 20 years ago, which some, some of y'all were here, it was looked at to give one IMSA truck up here, just for Guthrie City Limits.
I think it was 2003-ish.
2003-ish, was that?
Yeah, it's been looked at a couple times.
It's been looked at a couple of times and it was going to be, at, at that time, was going to be over a million dollars for one truck. One truck wouldn't cover this area for any amount of time because of our calls that go over. Forty percent of the time, we have one call go out, another one's going to go out.
One truck's hardly covered.
Yeah.
It's odd if I'm going to have three or four trucks out at the same time or something. But Mayor, it goes back to what you said, we can't be out here in these areas that aren't paying anything and we're leaving home and covering.
Exactly. Priority has to be here.
I know we don't want to, I know, I know you guys don't want to, but I mean, we don't want anybody hanging.
It's a tough decision to even think about it.
Prevents us from being left hanging.
But it's not, it's not going to prevent us from being left hanging because there are days when we're spread so thin that we can't cover that green area. There are days that we're having calls for services.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can't.
We can't provide.
You can't staff these things for.
I, I.
For the 100-year flight, you know. Another thing that kind of comes into play here is the time we spend per call now. You know, 10 years ago, our hospital could do more, we could take more out here and they could be taking care of it. More often than not, we're going south to the city now to get the patient to a level of care that they need. And part of that is us having a more advanced level of care on our trucks, which is great for the citizens, we're providing them the best level of care they can have. But those paramedics and advanced EMTs recognize what the patient needs, and they know that our facility here cannot handle it. So we're taking it straight down. So before, where a call here in town that went out here, we might be total manpower time less than an hour. Where now, we're going to the city, you're looking at, you know, a couple hours potentially.
If you look back in two thousand eight, including the EMS contract we have with the school district, we spent just under one point five billion. In two thousand sixteen, including the IMSA, the EMS contract, it was two point eight. So, it, almost. And if you look at, the school district and the city has continued to increase the budget. All we're doing is asking these other areas to participate. We're not asking them to carry the load, but just to participate in the cost of providing the service.
I think that's, that's.
Well, that's really what's gonna have to happen, anything.
When you get down to it, it's fair.
But it's gonna have to be a multi-tiered problem.
There's gonna have to be something.
It's gonna have to be a hundred grand plus the city involvement.
There's a, there's a little thing.
It goes back to the sword, they, they will lose service, or have to contract it with somebody else.
A number of areas have, it's like an insurance policy for IMSA, where you pay so much a month to have services so that when IMSA comes, you don't get a bill from IMSA, okay? Why don't we do that?
Well, the biggest problem, we have nobody to administer. We have no billing staff here. I mean, and the other problem is we're, in the metro, they put it on your water bill. And you live in the cities that contract with IMSA, it's three dollars, something cents, and I think in almost.
Like in the bill that's taken up a month.
It's just like any of the other fees we have on our current bill. And that is an insurance, it's an IMSA total care is what you get in that. They take what insurance pays, and you're not out of pocket anything.
Can we not, can we not do something like that?
We can look at it.
To help something like. But Jim, the, the reality is that the demographics of these.
I understand a bully, it is.
I agree with you.
It's a core area.
And what Mr. Case is saying, there are things we can do, there's other issues we need to address, but tonight, we're trying to focus on this one. The fact that we got people that live outside of our cer, well, live outside of the area that contributes to pay the cost, that aren't participating in paying for the cost. We'll have other opportunities in the future to address some of the other issues, like the one you're bringing up. Tonight, not to try to do too many things at one time, tonight, this is what we're trying to focus on.
What's the population in these areas, do we know?
They can't, I mean, you've got the, the towns, you know, Coyle, Langston, that are, you know, if school's in session between the two, you might push four thousand. I don't wanna say they're around thirty-five hundred students, but.
And didn't you estimate today that the calls in this area that's not financially participating was fifteen, twenty percent?
It's probably, yeah, between fifteen and twenty percent.
On the total call box?
Yeah, well, it's pretty sparsely populated. So, I mean, you may only have one house for every two miles out there in some of those areas.
Only got two blacktop roads.
I mean, something else is, but it's the end.
Regardless of if you run up there, there's still a cost to having service available to those people.
But when you look at the time commitment.
That's very true.
That, that even makes.
Well, that's the.
That's, that's what blows us out.
Fifteen miles from that, but twice as long.
Yeah, it's like making, it's like making five runs in the city limits.
It is. Takes you thirty minutes to get there, and you're on scene for a while.
It's a tough decision.
It's not just the dollars, it's, it is a time, more of a time element than.
So what's our proposal here?
I think we re.
You wanna redraw the map, Steve?
I think we oughta redraw the map.
That sounds like, or get that, yeah, redraw the map and add what's in there, or, and get what money we can that's already available.
I would ask, I would ask that we give them some kind of notice, not just.
Oh, yeah, we got, of course, we gotta do that.
You know, six months minimum, because if they're gonna do any kind of a ballot measure, it's gonna take time to get that together.
But that's tough.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Ryan, but our only leverage.
Mayor, is.
Is that the map you're gonna draw?
The school district.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's the green.
But wouldn't.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Depends on which map.
Would another option be to give them six months to come up with a plan to participate in paying the cost, or if not, we regrow?
I, I, I say, I, I don't disagree with that. I'm not saying we redraw the map.
I don't even know if six months is enough for it.
Well, if they're not taking, they haven't got a qualified center in six months.
To initiate.
To at least get something initiated. I mean, if they're working on something in six months.
You can always extend it. If they're making progress, you can always extend it.
So, in the meantime, do we still go out there?
Oh, you got to, you got to, until you come to. We're bound to, until we notify the health department, they're bound to.
So, if we're gonna rob Peter to pay Paul and get him more people, how are we gonna do that?
Oh, that's another story.
Yeah, that's another story.
That's a different issue.
Well, that's another story that's on this agenda.
It's a whole nother, it's a whole nother discussion.
If we get the roughly hundred, five thousand from this area, and we add those three people back, part of when we took those three people out, we put into, I think it was either forty or between forty and fifty percent of our savings, we put into overtime, because we knew overtime would go up.
That'll come back.
We can take that back in, you match those two, but probably in a position to put those three back. So, but, and if we don't get that hundred and five, and we have to take it all out of city funds, that is a much more difficult decision, because where do you come up with that balance, a hundred thousand? Because I can't tell you today, we got a hundred thousand to take away from any other budget to put in a fire department.
And it wouldn't be fair.
In the meantime, we got a day just that happened where our citizens are left unchecked for over an hour. Or right at an hour, which means people can die. Okay, and so, somehow, there's gotta be a stopgap where we get, maybe it's temporary help, or something's gonna have to happen to where we can offset this shortage in the interim. We can't go another year with having hours that where our people are not covered.
What, what, that's what you're saying.
You can't hire temporary firefighters and.
Can you, are you talking?
Have them come in if you're.
In Coyle? Well, like, we can call mutual aid all we want, but they're not bound to come, and they may not have anybody available. But we're getting into prime time for our winter qualifier season, so not only us, but everybody in this county, everybody stretched thin.
Night, night times, it's not hard to get the volunteers out, because, you know, they're all fork and hoe.
But during the day, we're covering most of this county during the day, because the volunteers don't have folks to respond to stuff a lot of the times. Or if they do, it's one or two guys, because they're work.
Yeah.
So what's, what is a reasonable time for the county and the cities to get together and have this dialogue and decide what they're gonna do to our, our proposal of redrawing the lines? Is six months a reasonable time?
I think it may not be done, but if you, what my experience, if you give people too long, they wait till the deadline starts.
Right.
So to me, if you give them six months, and if they make good progress, you can always extend it. But at the end of six months, if they make no effort at all or no progress, then you may not extend it and say, hey, we're changing about.
I don't know how we define progress, but it sounds to me like, with the chief in dialogue for a number of years, they've just been counting on our, your good graces to cover it.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if it's called a bluff, but they just said.
Well, we've made the threat, for lack of a better term, that here's what we could do if we don't see some kind of change, and we haven't done anything.
And that went to the city council before?
We've discussed it two or three at least other workshops, so.
Well, not for the whole time, until twenty-ten, we were.
Yeah, yeah, since I've been here, I know, we've had at least two workshops, if not three, so.
Well, I.
This is the second one I've been in, and nothing's happened since first one, three years.
I think we need to make, I think we need to make it a formal, somehow, a, a formal statement. And I can tell you this.
And remember, we don't have an action item on the agenda tonight, so if, we will bring it back to the next meeting for, but.
For city council.
The, the mayor of Coyle.
Do they have volunteer firefighter departments out there?
That's what I was.
This deals with the ambulance service.
We're surrounded by firefighters.
Not the firefighters.
We're talking, ambulances is what we're talking about primarily.
See, and that's where the problem lies. I'd like to know, have we had any, have we had any calls gone unanswered?
That are firefighting.
We get.
In our green.
They say it's taken us a lot longer to get to them, but we're getting there.
But.
Getting a house fire with one person.
So three this year, and this is only the second month of the year.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about, somehow or another.
We're getting there, it's not, the three were in city limits. I guarantee, we probably had ten or so that are in South County where it's not a big deal, because IMSA's right there, but still, I mean, if we're missing calls, we're missing calls, it's unacceptable.
Okay, but I, from understanding what you're saying, is that if, if we, if we are, if we have a request to go to the bluer yellow area here, okay, outside of our, IMSA call, and that would take, uh, that would take our last vehicle, we say no.
We'd call somebody else for them.
We say no. Isn't that what you're saying?
So it's you out there with a heart attack on the floor, and you're sitting there saying, no, we're not coming to get you.
We tell, we tell people, know how it works.
If we don't have the help, the city.
We've got a moral issue, we started this with a moral issue.
We were saying the same thing. If that, if that, if that, if that ambulance goes.
No, I'm saying we give him interim help right now.
Yeah, we'll tell the call.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, we rob Peter to pay Paul, that's what we do.
So, let me tell you how this, let me tell you how we operate. So typically, there's six or seven guys on duty at a time with, you know, one or two off on vacation or some kind of leave. That's, that, that's everything. That's fire, EMS, that's everything. So, six people, that's three ambulances. And we have nothing left. That puts it in perspective. Now, when we drop down below five people, we're calling people in, but that doesn't mean they're coming in. It's all voluntary. And you're looking at some of the core group that comes in all the time. And it takes them a while to get here. I mean, they don't have lights and sirens on their personal vehicles to get here quick, so I mean, it takes them, you know, five to fifteen, twenty minutes to get to where they're living, to get to the station. So there's that much time we potentially.
And we have to remember, this didn't happen overnight.
Exactly, and it's not gonna get fixed.
And even when we add one more back to each shift, you're still gonna have time. Because if you run three ambulances, even if you got people coming back to backfill the station, it takes them some time to get there.
Yeah, well, these two came in last night, because we had five calls come in at once.
So I mean.
Inside city limits that were a missing call.
When we go to, back to nine-man shifts, it's still not perfect. There are gonna be.
What is the, that hundred-year flight?
What does a, because I'm a little bit shocked that they don't have an admin over there, to be quite honest. Well, I mean, does that, does that relieve any load of any burden whatsoever? I don't know.
On emergency stuff?
Not on emergency stuff, I'm talking about on day-to-day. No?
Nobody's there, nobody answers the phone, so, and that's about it.
Like you were saying, you don't have a deal to manage the IMSA money, because you don't.
We had an admin slash billing clerk until oh-seven-ish.
Oh-seven.
You guys.
He contracted our billing out, which is, don't get me wrong, that's helped our billing revenue tremendously, but that's what that person.
But, but our concentration needs to be on the responders, not the.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Just something to think about on manpower. If you get us back to eight-man shifts, it'll be two eight-man shifts and one nine-man shift. Go back to having what we call.
You mean nine and ten?
Nine and ten, where's this eight?
We're at eight now.
Well, I know, but just then, the short being, well, the ones are higher.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But there ought to be one crew that's long, just with military lead injuries. It, it's gonna pretty well almost a hundred percent pay for us.
What we did in one town was the floater, or the extra guy, we actually made them a daytime employee so that we had that extra person when the volunteer fire departments weren't available.
That's not always a bad idea, because you could still, if you needed a Chevy.
I'm not proposing that, I'm just telling you, we did that in one town, because we tried to put that person where we didn't have the reliability of real fire assistance. But that can be discussed and worked out. That's an issue to talk about, there's a difference I know.
So we put this on next city council agenda to, uh.
Isn't there another fire department right down here, east of Nardway Zee?
Woodcrest, right.
Right down here.
Okay, aren't they closer to these than us?
They're a fire department, they don't provide ambulance.
That's provided.
That's the kicker. There's thirteen fire depart, fourteen fire departments in the county.
It's about ambulance.
It's an ambulance issue. Taking care of fires, it's just. But the bad part about the kicker for us is, our firefighters are our IMSA guy.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So a lot of the time, our IMSA guys, they take our firefighters.
A lot of the time is the best of both worlds. We wouldn't have the manpower numbers that we do, if we didn't run the ambulance.
That's a good thing.
But boy, when we get thin, and the ambulance is busy, we are thin. And it, it's a potential double jeopardy.
And if, if I can say just one other thing, we've talked about redrawing this map, and, you know, giving these guys time in the towns of, you know, Coyle, Langston. Coyle, Coyle does have medical first responders. Langston does not have medical first responders.
Mulholland does not.
Mulholland does not have medical first responders. So hopefully, you know, just the way we're all thinking is, they'll say, of course, this makes perfect sense, we wanna pay our part. But I mean, that, that does probably have a little bit to play, because, you know, especially Mulholland, where you can have a first responder there, they don't, they don't have any. It's, it's strictly us showing up there.
Coyle's mayor has indicated to me, their town board is willing to work to get a solution. Uh, Langston's previous mayor indicated that they were, they recently switched mayors, but she, she said they were in favor of it as well. And I do know that a couple of years ago, yeah, they investigated getting their own service, and they quickly found out it wasn't feasible. And we were their best option, of course. So, uh, the Mulholland Town Board, I don't think they're very active, but like Ryan said, they have.
So are these towns paying anything for us to sound their center?
That's the quickest piece of.
And I'll tell you guys, another facet in here is Langston University. Even if we do a property tax, they still don't pay a dime.
I know.
And I'll tell you, they are a huge burden on our call volume, because they'll flat out tell you for administration, their students don't have insurance. And unless it's a state employee working for the school, we don't get squat from them when we bill them. If we even have a good contact address, you know, with them being students. But we don't, we run a lot, I'd say, when school's in session, two or three times a week minimum to that university. And in a nutshell, it's free.
Really?
We have went to them how many times, Kim? At least twice? Put a credit hour fee, there's fees for everything on your tuition. Put a fee on there and give us some money every year. There you go. That was the easiest fix.
When we cut it off.
The regents, well.
They're in the county, they're in the county, we can't do that.
So, so if we, if we're successful, and the reasonable heads.
Wait a minute, is that true? Now they're not in the county.
They're not, they're not in the green. No, no, they're not in the green. I thought they were.
Does that mean that the, the, we can redraw all of this?
The greens stays the same, yeah, the rest, we can do whatever we want.
So I think that's what we talk about doing, we talk about drawing these networks, we talk to Langston University about a surcharge on their tuition for this deal.
Right, yeah, it's hard to pay them other than the call line, because nobody else is paying. And if everybody else is paying their part, it puts the pressure on.
I would think, I would think we could have some dialogue with Dr. Smith.
My, my concern about the whole deal, from a manpower standpoint, is you're talking about giving a six-month window to have a plan sort of drawn up, so you're talking about six months at the earliest to get that hundred and five thousand that you're talking about using as the big portion to fund three people, to make, bring us back to nine-man shifts. We're talking about six months at the earliest before we can get any more help over there. So we're gonna continue to be in the situation that we're in. That's my concern.
And that's what my position's been all along, be to find a stopgap.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll keep doing the best job we can and giving the best service we can, I mean.
Well, we all know that.
Yeah, and, but I mean, it's, it's only, it's only a matter of time, and you look.
And those people outside know that too. They've been counting on it.
And we could have some discussions on that issue, but tonight, we wanted to make progress on this issue, but we can have some discussions on this issue.
Just a quick question. If we redo, if we do redraw this map, who's gonna be responding to these people? I mean, they're gonna call, and we're gonna wind up responding, because no one's gonna have an ambulance.
No, we're not. If, if, if I'm ordered that that's an order, and we're not gonna go, it's a sad decision to make.
So we're, somebody's gonna die.
It's a, it's a, it's a moral and ethical dilemma, but.
But that's where I'm coming from.
We risk.
Ethics and morals.
Oh, I know, none of us in this room wanna say that.
We work hard to get this department to where it is.
We don't either.
Yeah, we don't wanna do any of that.
But it's not gonna come back on you guys before it comes back on us. It's gonna be, well, the fire department wouldn't send an ambulance. The fire department said, no, they're not coming.
I just don't see it, I don't, I just don't see it feasible.
And we gotta do what we gotta do, so.
Because kinda like that call this morning, dispatch was getting calls from LifeNet, everybody, you're not, no one's responding, we don't have anyone to respond. Well, it's not our district, well, then it wound up being our district, you know, so we'll respond. I think that's gonna, how it's gonna happen. You're gonna get out there, and Coyle or Mulholland's gonna be begging for someone to respond, and we don't have any, they don't have anyone to respond, we're gonna go. It doesn't fix the problem, but. In my opinion, I, I just.
Did bills go to anybody for those kind of calls?
What was that?
Well, the patient gets a bill.
Does anybody get billed for that?
Every patient gets a bill, but.
Well, like, it's a problem, you know, Medicaid's paying it, paying a flat rate, and then they can't make the patient responsible to pay it.
But I mean, like, what about sending bills to the cities?
It's not theirs.
But that's only on Medicaid.
I think they still.
It's a lot of these are, but they're medical.
It's a lot of our patients right now, Medicaid or Medicaid.
Low income people. Statistically speaking, we have an exorbitant number.
Yeah, we do.
The whole county's only paying.
I don't know their.
So much.
X amount.
They're paying a flat rate and they tell you, you're hard.
Supplies are going up.
Yep. Well, I'm saying, I worry out there about exactly. One of the things I didn't.
We're having to pay it.
Was the green. Okay.
There's gotta be a B schedule, come up somehow to charge the cities, charge the school districts or the areas that we go into to at least come up. We do have to redraw it, and then that's gonna push them off high center because right now, they have no, there's no skin, they're not gonna do anything until it comes to a point where.
Yeah.
Where they have no services. And that's when.
Which is exactly what we're doing here.
And it's not, yeah, and it's not just solely a, a cost issue, it's a time issue.
Right. Let me ask this, how much?
And a, equipment issue and manpower, it's, it's, we got a lot of.
Emily.
Emily, had a good point. Can you make your point again?
Oh, if our city is paying for it, basically, why don't we build our city when there was one of these calls like that? I mean, our city is putting the bill.
No legal way to collect.
Well, but, well, well, wait, with that being said, that goes to our drawing the map. Okay, if we don't get a check, okay, then we don't go outside of the line. Okay, if we get the check, then we do go outside of the line.
That brings it back into whatever we're saying to the moral and ethical.
Well, then that's up to the city. It's up to, we have to be moral enough to handle our own.
I agree with what you're saying, I'm just saying, I'm just hearing from both sides.
In our expectation.
Do we have any legal recourse?
That everybody's gonna give common sense.
Unless we have, say, we're within a higher area. And agree to.
Right.
But I have seen.
Can we, uh, get one discussion?
We've got.
One discussion going here?
Our, our expectations is when we present the six month deadline, everybody's gonna respond with common sense and rationale. That doesn't always happen. I remember in one community, I've been doing this for thirty years, I remember in one community, I wasn't city manager in the community, but it had to do with fire ground, boundaries, and the fire service next door didn't have adequate protection. And the fire station inside that town was across the street from my house on fire, but it was in a different fire boundary. And the firefighters had to stand there in their yard and watch that fire burn that house down. You hope it doesn't ever get to the point that you deal with people that are that irrational, that they won't try to solve the problem.
Did you try to solve the problem after that?
So.
Yeah.
So if I, I would like to have the number of what EMS cost us out of our, out of our fire budget on an annualized basis, then I'd like to know a percentage outside of our green, uh, a, a pretty accurate percentage so that I can get to a number. In other words, if our EMS is costing us five hundred thousand a year, for example, easy figure. Well, it probably is, whatever, million a year. Okay, say it's a million dollars a year, and fifty percent of it is out of our green, that's a half a million a year, we're funding anyway. So these other cities are gonna have to step up and write a check.
I understand. Now, some of that will be difficult because you're using staff as both EMTs and fire. So separating that out to say, this is much as fire and this is much as EMT, it's not.
Brian, I, a couple of years, I did on final business. Eighty-six percent of our total activity, you don't have a firefighter.
Okay, there you go, out of two point some million, eighty-six percent.
I went deeper than that. When I was set and done, based on that percentage of activity, took all of our employees, the city's general fund was shoring it up almost to the tune of nine hundred thousand, based on what we were, as best we could accurately put a number on. But I took all our expenditures from the year, took eighty-six percent of that, which isn't completely accurate, that's about as close as we can get.
So here's how we look at it then. We give the six month ultimatum to redraw the map, to go out and put, uh, Mill Leveon out here and have a vote, which probably won't pass anyway. Hopefully it does, okay? But then, we hit each and every city with the shortfall on top of that, okay, that we need from them on an, um, annualized basis, they can pay it monthly, or we don't go outside of that line to their community, period.
But here's the other kicker on that, Brian, why isn't those cities' responsibilities assured?
Why is it ours?
Well, I'm saying, I know that, I'm not, I'm not gonna be dissuaded, but why is the burden on those individual cities and not, they need to share that with the county to come up with the.
Well, the county is, is part of that as well. That's, that's a whole, that's probably.
The property tax would cover them all, but you can't put the remainder on just the cities, it needs to be split between the counties.
Property, the property tax.
That would be the, the baseline to do it. Well, the other, the other kicker to that is legally, there's only certain ways that they can do those CMS. Now, I'm still, we were always told that it can only be by whole counties, whole counties, not portions there, uh, school districts or city limits.
Right.
I found out today, doing some research and some phone calls, that there's actually some doing it county wide that have school district boundaries carved out of the edge of them. So if that would be the case, we could do all of this in Logan County that's not currently in a school district, ambulance district, and then the rest of the county would be paying, it would help us. It would help our folks on the west side of the county get a little bit more funding.
Can you get a clarification on that? Cause that might.
The man I needed to quiz on that was out, the director of EMS health department, he's in a meeting all week.
That might be, we need to close this up.
But even more than that, it may come down to attorney generals or district attorneys' opinion, cause obviously, they've set a precedence by allowing it out here. Who made the ruling on it, I don't know.
Okay.
So, well, let's, let's, let's get some more information on that, uh, and, uh, get prepared to have some more dialogue at the next city council meeting.
So in four minutes, what have we accomplished?
Well, we've decided that we're, we're gonna do something, a presentation at the next, uh, city council meeting.
Okay.
That reflects boundaries and, and presenting to the counties and the cities of, uh, some alternatives, including, um, adblock, uh, including not providing service, including possibly billing those, uh, communities for runs that we make.
And we'll have an action item for you to actually take action on.
And one other little side note on this, we've expended hours upon hours, I mean, Kim and I in the last six years have done, I don't know how many, it's not our problem. We need to quit spending city time and resources on something that's not our problem. They need to figure it out, it's their problem.
Well, that, that's a good point.
Well, it's the county, but it's also the individual cities.
Yes, I mean, those.
That's what I'm talking about, even with the county tax.
We're, we're doing all the. And they shouldn't be, yeah, so.
You're a giant.